Welcome, everyone, to the Town Hall meeting with Secretary Rick Perry. First of all, I'd like to just thank Secretary Perry and your staff for coming to Jefferson Lab. Your visit provides a great opportunity for laboratory staff and leadership to discuss the great work that the laboratory's been doing, and there's a lot of it, as you've seen. We hope that the time spent here at the laboratory, seeing the facilities and talking to the people, has been something that's been of value and gives you perspective on some of the accomplishments of the laboratory and the challenges that are ahead. From a side office perspective, as I go back and think about the contribution of the laboratory and the factors that affect that, I think two things come to mind. The first one is that the enthusiasm of the people that work here at the laboratory. As you can see, there's people with a lot of excitement about what they do, and they just enjoy their work. That's been my experience since I've begun working here. The other factor that I think contributes to a great deal is the partnering relationship that the side office, the federal staff, has with the laboratory. The side office works very hard to ensure that the laboratory's resources are provided so the laboratory can fulfill its mission, which is to deliver world-class science. And then towards that end, as we've talked about a lot, one of the things that I think is a great example of our partnering is on contract reform. The side office and laboratories work together, really at all levels, to achieve success in reducing and eliminating unnecessary government regulations from the contract. So our partnering relationship remains strong. While there's many challenges ahead, I believe they will be met with the commitment of laboratory staff and leadership and the side office to work together to continue this strong partnership as we work together. So, once again, a thank you for coming. We've very much been looking forward to it and enjoyed very much spending the day with you. So with that, let me turn it over to Stuart, who has a few words to say.
Thanks very much, Scott. Appreciate the words, and I want to echo what you said about the partnership between the Department, the side office, and laboratory management. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks so much for taking time out of your extremely busy schedules. We're busy day in and day out now, running the facility and getting great science out. In a minute, I'm going to ask you to help me welcome the 14th U.S. Secretary of Energy, Rick Perry, to Jefferson Lab. He arrived shortly after noon, and I have to say, we have absolutely packed his schedule full of opportunities of all the great things that we're able to see today. He's been able to meet our great people, see tremendous facilities that the lab community has designed and built, experienced what it's like to conduct nuclear physics research, both from the accelerator control room and from the experimental halls, see how we handle the big data that we're accumulating and analyzing, and interact with students at our outreach event. He's learned about CBAF, the World's Most Advanced Particle Accelerator for investigating the quark structure of the atom's nucleus. Having gone into two of our experimental halls, he's seen firsthand the incredibly complex equipment that it takes to explore nature at the subatomic scale. Secretary Perry has seen our supercomputers, learned how we're advancing toward computing at the exascale. He's seen our R&amp;D facilities, where scientists and engineers are building the backbone of the world's first hard X-ray continuous free electron laser for SLAT National Lab at Stanford and in partnership with other national labs. And finally, he's interacted with a group of local fifth graders who are learning firsthand about the opportunities STEM fields offer from our staff members. Throughout his visit, the secretary has shown a real willingness to reach out to our people and hear their stories, not just about the research, but the personal stories that we all have to tell about how we came to work at a national lab and what we hope to accomplish on behalf of science and our nation. I must say that I and everyone he's met personally today has remarked on the secretary's deep interest in all of you, in our people, in the work that we're doing for the nation and the importance of that work. Before I turn over the microphone, I'd like to offer you a little background on Secretary Perry. In addition to managing the 17 national labs, of which Jefferson Lab is a part, the agency he leads is also tasked with maintaining a safe, secure, and effective nuclear deterrent and reducing the threat of nuclear proliferation, carrying out the environmental cleanup from the Cold War nuclear mission, and overseeing the U.S. energy supply. Perry grew up the son of tenant farmers in the tiny west Texas community of Paint Creek, which is about a 50-mile drive north of Abilene. He earned the distinction of Eagle Scout as a young man and attended college at Texas A&amp;M University, where he earned a degree in animal science. Just a few minutes ago, I presented to the secretary with the Nuclear Science Merit Badge. Secretary Perry is also a former farmer and rancher. He served two terms as Texas Commissioner of Agriculture, three terms in the Texas House of Representatives. Before that, he is a veteran of the United States Air Force and was commissioned as an officer following his graduation from college. Between 1972 and '77, he flew C-130 tactical airlift aircraft in Europe and the Middle East. In 1998, Rick Perry was elected Lieutenant Governor of Texas, and in 2000, he assumed the Office of Governor and eventually became the longest-serving governor in Texas history, leading the world's 12th-largest economies from 2000 to 2015. Now, less than a year after confirmation to the Office of Secretary of the United States Department of Energy, Mr. Perry is here at Jefferson Lab to address us here today. Please join me in welcoming to the podium the United States Secretary of Energy, Mr. Rick Perry.
Thank you, Stuart. I want to be a bit more brief on the app, just for purposes of... Yesterday, I could not even talk to you. See, my voice is coming back. That's pretty funny, when you think about it, a politician who can't talk. That's a... It's a thing. But the most interesting... Well, maybe not, it's not the most interesting. Most consequential thing I did today was just talk to a group of young people that came here, or they fifth grade, sixth grade, somewhere like that, and I would share with them a little bit about why and what they were doing was important, and that the things that they are going to be involved with, and hopefully the spark that gets ignited in their science, or math, or wherever in that technical side of the world that they may have been going. And that, you know, one of the work that they do, whether it's on the healthcare side or whether it's picking up a loss like this. And when I say the iPhone that was created in 1996, somebody said, "Like hell it was in 2006." I mean, that's how fast the world changes, and how fast that these children had the opportunity to be involved with it. And what you all did, one of them... I can't tell you how happy I am that, number one, I got asked to come serve in this role, and that I had the great sense to say yes to the President when he asked me, because this has been one of the most exciting years of my life. We're just about a year away from the second day of March, was the day that I was confirmed and sworn in as the 14th Secretary of Energy. For those of you who know your history, that's Texas Independence Day. So, hopefully, you left here with a little more dollars than you came in here with. But talking to those kids today makes it really important what you do. And I share with you, I'm going to cut my remarks a little bit short today, because I think my voice is a bit of a break, but also introduce you to a couple of people that don't normally travel with me. We, for the last year, we've been getting our feet on the ground, understanding the agency, interacting. Brian McCormick's been my Chief of Staff, he's been around for a long time in Washington, D.C. I'm basically a neophyte when it comes to Washington, D.C. I've been involved with public service for a long time, 40-plus years, whether it was a pilot in the United States Air Force, as an elective mission in Texas. So, you know, and it wasn't all planned out. It wasn't something that, "Man, I want to be the governor of the state of Texas." This was, you know, God's got an interesting plan. Sometimes it ain't your plan. I was in the Oval Office about six months ago, was talking to the President, and he looked over at me, and it was just three people in there. And he said, "Perry, you wanted this job one time, didn't you?" And I said, "Yes, sir, I did, and the manager's glad you have it now." But, and the reason I kind of give you a little bit of flavor of what's gone on for the last year, because this really has been an exciting time for me, getting to know the men and women who work in the enterprise, in the Department of Energy, and particularly the national labs. In my 60-plus years of life, I've had great blessings and gotten to do really interesting things, but I have never worked with people that I find to be more interesting, more intelligent, more patriotic than the men in the national labs. You all are truly... And today was a great example. Down in the bowels of this lab, talking to a couple of young men, I don't know whether David and Thomas are in here or not, and we were just visiting about what they do and how literally world-changing what you're involved with, and why what you do is so important to the future of the globe. And I was trying to make the connection between, you know, how short a period of time it was between when that iPhone was actually developed today, and one of them was making... He was trying to explain to me, an animal science major, actually, I went to college to do a veterinary. And after my, end of my sophomore year, 16 hours of organic chemistry, they explained to me I really didn't want to be a veterinarian. And I told the Dean of the Vescovo, I said, "Oh, no, sir." I said, "This is my life's ambition." I said, "This is all I ever wanted to be." And he said, "Son, I'm looking at your transcript. You don't want to be a veterinarian." And so, again, you know, a why in my life that took me a particular way, but has led me here, and this is an incredibly interesting, important work that you do. As those two young men were explaining to me how they're peering into with extraordinary ability to see what is going on inside of the tiniest part of that atom, the quarks, the gluons, and the... They were... They said, "In a hundred years or so, someone will be talking about what we're doing here the way Benjamin Franklin would have been trying to explain to somebody his iPhone." And you think about, that's our... That's the excitement, that's the potential, that's the... What you all are involved with changes the world. And I'm not sure there's any other place in the federal government, from my perspective, that has any more important role than what you play and what you're doing. My role and my job is to make sure that it's managed well, that we have the resources that we need to get the job done, to share this story with both the members of Congress and the public about what you do and why it's so important. I'm sure that the other 13 secretaries who came before me were very good spokespersons for the agency, but I'm not sure there'll be anybody that's any more passionate. I love what I do, and I love what I do because I see it reflected in you. Your work is truly important. And as we go forward, I know one of the things Latifah asked me about, how was my trip to Saudi Arabia? And she had followed our trip to Saudi Arabia. And I want to share with you, and that's the global aspect of what you all do, the global aspect of what we are involved with in the Department of Energy, and our relationships internationally are... I think we are on the verge of some extraordinary potential relationships. When we think about the historic partnerships with the UK, or with the French, or with the Italians, and we will continue having those relationships, but there's the potential for us to expand our reach, our influence, in places in the world we've never had before in the Department of Energy, because you're about things that change people's lives. And that's what this department's always been about, that when you think about, whether it was the work that was done with the human genome, whether it was the work with eruption drilling in some of our national labs, I don't know the internet of me, the things that DOE are involved with are monumental. And I'm really proud of the Department. I'm really proud to be on your team. So, I want to ask Brian to come up and just share with you a little bit about his observations, and I've never, as I said, I'm not sure I've ever traveled with Brian before, so this may be a complete flop. But anyway, this is Brian McCormick. Brian has been, spent most of his adult life working... He was over in Baghdad for a while, worked for, I think he worked with Secretary Cheney, Vice President Cheney, excuse me, and has got quite a background. He just looks very young, and his years of experience are far outweigh his youthful appearance. Brian McCormick.
Secretary, thank you. This may be my first and last opportunity. Any questions you have, I mean? I think, just building on some of what Secretary Perry was just saying, that over the past year, coming up on my anniversary, has stuck out of my mind, has been, certainly the international travel. Certainly talk about the domestic work that meetings of different events that we do, but going internationally and watching and being part of meetings with your counterparts, whether it be the Chinese, Japanese, Saudi Arabians, all across the world, I think is probably, to me, one of the most striking things, because it does show how all the work here, and we often talk about this being the, you know, the labs being the crown jewels. In almost every conversation, there's an interest from our international counterparts, and what are the labs doing? And I think every lab that we go to, that you have gone to, I think you're up about eight labs now, a big part of that is the conversation of what are we doing with international partners? What's the interest that other countries have? How are we taking technology and sharing with other countries? It's always been a significant and such a part of the conversation. I think the other thing that I would mention is, and maybe a little bit broader, energy space, is just the talk about what is the U.S. role in, you know, we oftentimes will hear about energy dominance, a theme that comes out of Washington, but the conversation, the opportunity that has really changed, you think about 10 years ago, who was talking about LNG export facilities? We were building import facilities here in the U.S., and now we're talking about export facilities. That conversation on the international front is very significant, because now, it's not just a resource that we have to export coal or natural gas, but we're also talking about the different technology and innovation that we have. So, the labs really do have a very important part of that conversation, depending on every country, but it is pretty significant, especially in the international forums, the Clean Energy Ministerials, the G7 conversations. Those are all important places. Look at some of the Board of Directors and other members that are here. These are all conversations that have taken place for decades, but to be able to say, "Here's what else we have as the United States," according to the table now for a conversation, we're not looking at a menu, we are, you know, we're running the conversation. So I think that's been an important part. The other thing I would say, too, on the lab front, is the education of others within the government leadership about the role that the labs play in supporting their efforts. So, HHS, DOD is an obvious partner, DOD with DARPA, DOD on other fronts, on original funds and that sort. Chris Ball is a colleague here, he's Acting Director of RPE, so I may drag him on stage if I start running short on the ideas to talk about. But the, I think that's a big thing. One of the things Secretary is very proud of is the work that we're doing with the Veterans Administration on helping veterans manage a program called MVP, and taking blood samples from veterans and helping them predict and look at what their future potential health issues might be. So that, again, there's just always thinking about how we're partnering across the government and applying what you all do, and your colleagues in other labs, to further the mission of the U.S. government. So, I'll pause there to see if that strikes anyone's thoughts on any interest or questions or ideas, but it really has been rather fascinating here. Chris, do you have anything to add from the RPE perspective? I know it's a program that has a lot of early stage.
Sure, I'll say it. I don't come prepared... You must be from Washington, because I don't come prepared for the speech. Thanks.
I'll then do your performance review once we get back.
The ex-Acting RPE Director. So, I'm Chris Ball, Acting RPE Director, also a foot in the Office of Science, working with Paul DeBar, who I think many of you all have met before. It's not obvious why the RPE Director would be here today to visit Jefferson Lab. Perspective on that is that, if you weren't aware, one of the things that RPE is supposed to do is develop revolutionary technology, but it's also supposed to do it in a different way. It's supposed to be quick response, adaptive, both in what we do, and contracting mechanisms, and hiring people, and even in the enabling legislation. Part of the role of RPE is to learn those lessons and disseminate that back to the larger Department of Energy. And so, you know, that's kind of where we're going. I think that's some of the direction that the secretary has given us, and certainly Paul DeBar has embraced, and that is, let's get rid of some of the onerous regulatory framework, push responsibility down to the folks who know how to do the job, hold them accountable, but do that. And so, in the spirit of, you know, that's really one of the reasons that I'm here. We'll talk about that. But the other thing I just want to lay on the table here for discussion is the STEM issue. Because my experience coming from the Department of Defense, one of the things I did there was for the Department of Navy to run STEM educational workforce programs at one point for the Office of Naval Research. And any of you all that are involved with this understand how critical it is to look towards the future, to who's going to replace, not that we're, you know, trying to encourage you out the door, but who's going to replace us, right, in science and technology? And you know, the key to that is starting early, getting people oriented in the fifth grade, sure, but all along the way. And, you know, we can't compete with the Googles, we can't compete with the Microsofts for salary and benefits and free lunches and massages and whatever else is given, so I'm glad. But once we bring people in the door at the college level, at the postdoc level, graduate student level, and they see what they can do, and the equipment that they can use, and the experiments, they think, "He got them, right? He got them." And they want to stay for a long time, like some of the folks we met today. So, I'll stop there, just lay some ideas on the table, and I assume we're going to have some questions and dialogue at some point.
Director, you've got a couple of questions. I think we'll try and get a lab in the future to work on cedar allergies. I got one taker on that.
Yes, we do have several questions. We solicited some questions in advance, and there's a number of here that are really interesting in how they fit in the conversations that we've been having today. So, keying off of STEM, one really interesting question, which all the labs are asking themselves, I'm curious to hear what the opinion is here. What do you see as the national lab's role in ensuring that our nation's best students, regardless of background, are provided opportunities to enter the STEM fields? What are some new things we can think about in the national lab system?
Well, I think, first and foremost, is the engagement component, and I think that's already taken place, as Chris just alluded to, the fact that people have programs that are thought out. I would say, again, just from my experience today, oftentimes I'd see folks from, you know, either foresaw from a lab going into the community. I thought this was interesting today, seeing extra bothered kids on campus. I think in the STEM space, you know, not to bore folks with congressional legislation and things like that, but I think, you know, there's STEM, some people are very for STEM, some people for STEAM they had in the arts, but, you know, we're seeing a lot of different ideas. One of them, I would bring up, is probably a little further along than STEM, or later in the timeline, would be, we're seeing a lot of good opportunity in competition. So there's a program called the Competes Act, that, so we're not just putting out, "Here's what government wants to do," or saying, "Here's an idea, and now we want people to come compete for it." I think a lot of folks are familiar with FOAS, the funding opportunities, but that mindset and that approach seems to be something that is gaining greater attention. The secretary's probably going to be doing some work with different organizations. We just did one recently, a local school in D.C., but looking at some of the more national organizations that are ringing in, that, you know, this may sound overly simple, but sometimes it's giving people recognition and attention, and, you know, encouraging them on that this is actually cool and fun, and it's worth them participating in. But the competition component, I think, is something that government, or at least this administration, Trump administration, would like to see more of, as an opportunity to bring forward innovative ideas. And I think that there's a wide array of different areas that, whether it's in energy space itself, or even things that's somewhat related, but in the water area, it's another topic that we hear a lot on the international front, but also domestically.
If I could, just add to what Brian's talking about here, it's the X Prize concept that we're going to have a competition in this country, X fries on water. I was in a conversation, change gears, it's the second, I was in a conversation last week with Dean King. Dean's had these competitions, robotics competitions, and what we're trying to do is to take that concept. We want kids to think about academic competition, just like we think about athletic competition. And that that's every bit as cool as being, you know, the captain of the football team as being the captain of the robotics team, and to bring really cool, exciting people to the forefront. We talked about, you know, how do we make, how do we make nuclear cool again? When I was a young boy, going up to college, all the smart kids were going to be nuclear engineers. And somewhere over the last 50 years, that changed. And there's a lot of reasons that that happened, but one is I think we took our eye off of the... One is, I think we took our eye off of the ball, from the standpoint of letting academic excellence, intellectual pursuit, the things that go on around here at National Labs, that somehow or another got relegated to the backseat. And, you know, our goal is to go make that, again, be in the driver's seat, where there's a whole bunch more kids that are going to be successful in life by being engaged in that intellectual pursuit, and that competition academically, that are going to play NFL ball, or NBA ball, or...
We got the Science Bowl coming up here.
Yeah, the Science Bowl is a great example. And I'm telling you, what you all are doing here with these, allowing these kids to come in and to expose them to, you know, really fascinating, interesting people that get to work here. Because, I mean, the science is fascinating and all of those. But when you say it's your people that work in these labs, it's the men and women who are in this lab who have really fascinating stories, and have the potential to really change these young people's lives forever. So, I mean, I can't tell you how what a strong proponent I am for you all to do.
I just have to say, every day here at Jefferson Lab, nuclear is cool.
We have to see...
We're already there.
We have to see it tweeted out, though. So it's tweeted, it's...
I'm looking at communications.
Sir, actually, and give us some feedback here. Because we sat, we sat down with a group of people probably six months ago to talk about, what, how, how do you run the public relations campaign to go basically with that? I mean, I'm not saying that's the right moniker, is make, you know, make nuclear cool again, is that the right one? But we need to be, we need to be talking about that. We need to be promoting it. We need to be, you know, help put it on the market, or I don't know.
I think, I think it was probably about a dozen or so millennial kids who have all, some of them want to be nuclear engineers, some of them are just, they want to be for nuclear, for environmental purposes. And having a part in that conversation is pretty significant. They do have a different perspective.
Okay, we have a question on the, on the science and our collaborations, particularly with our international partners. So more and more scientists in nuclear particle physics work in large collaborations. We saw with international partners, we saw that today as we toured the facility. Can you tell us your opinion on the importance of continued international collaboration in scientific research?
I think I would touch on that a fair amount, but just underscore it. It's, it's across the board. But certainly in the nuclear space, you know, we speak with any number of organizations. When we were at the IAEA meeting, met with the Saudi KDC group. There's any number of groups, obviously there are a lot of different programs happening in different countries where we have international partnerships. But this is, these relationships and the science and the innovation technology that we provide is central to not only our mission, but I think the broader diplomatic mission of the United States.
This one is related to power, which we already talked about today, and resiliency. What is the DOE doing to ensure the resiliency of the power distribution system with respect to disruptions caused by storms or other potential disruptions? Especially considering the National Labs' heavy reliance on the existing power grid.
I'll let you talk about what you do for your own power grid. But I think the electric supply aspect and role that the Department of Energy and the secretary plays is, actually, I think, sir, it was on your first week, there was a major windstorm in Michigan. Obviously, we just went through a pretty significant cold snap in the Northeast. A lot of folks will remember the polar vortex. So constantly thinking about what are the new technologies that you have available that are, you know, industry is deploying. But then also thinking about making sure the components, you know, there was a fair amount of work that secretary did in a baseload proposal to the FERC, about making sure that, you know, the supply system, onsite fuel supply, was something that was available. The FERC unanimously agreed about the importance of resiliency, but they didn't move forward with that specific proposal. They're going to continue looking at that, and, you know, we'll continue working with them on making sure that Americans, they go to flip the switch, that baseload electricity is there and available for them. There's a significant transition taking place. You know, there's a significant amount more gas coming online. That's great, that has a great opportunity for the US. You have new technologies. Constantly talking about storage, but what role, what bigger role could hydro play? Nuclear, obviously, is significant, especially if we're thinking about, you know, the clean energy component of nuclear energy, to achieving our environmental objectives. So there's, there's a lot there. You know, and obviously coal is, I think, still about 33% of generation. So, you know, Virginia here, you guys are in the PJM marketplace. Market has to look at how incentives are being put out there, and what's the right balance. But they got it. When that bike switch goes to get turned, it has to work.
There's a short term and a long term aspect to the power issue. And Ryan, you would just expand a little bit on one of the stuff that I talked about earlier today. And, you know, you all, it is complex because of its unique role, its unique size, to be powered by a small modular reactor.
Right. So again, looking at different technology, and the Idaho National Labs have been looking at a lot of this as well. But the, you know, what opportunities are there? Is there an opportunity for an SMR to be located in a lab, or maybe a DOD facility, that could take care of the reliability and the security concerns? And then potentially, you know, use any excess electricity for local community? Obviously, there's, there's some stakeholder perspectives that would have to come into account there. But again, these are technologies that we weren't thinking about a few years ago, or maybe we were thinking about, but we're getting incrementally closer to actually potentially deploying them. But first and foremost, are they opportunities for the department, or for the government itself, to be taking care of what our needs are? And I'll also just mention another area, and the resiliency component is the physical components of the grid, but also the cyber components of the grid. Been a major focus of the department and the secretary. Having a new office, beginning to coordinate all those aspects and activities. Just because, again, you look across, you know, just here in your own, in your own lab, how many, you know, you have a CIO, you have all these different components. And obviously, it's a major, major area of influence. But when we look across the DOE enterprise, and I think there was a, I can't remember what the name of the cyber attack was in June. But, you know, we had to put communication out across 100,000 contractors, over, you know, two dozen plus facilities. And everyone uses their, has different communications platform they use. So even for us to say, hey, here's the things we have to be thinking about, took a little bit of time that we were in a situation where we needed to communicate. So having, having someone at a higher level that's accountable upfront would be a welcome addition to the team.
Here's a question related to young scientists entering the field. About a third of all nuclear physics PhDs earn their degree of research conducted at Jefferson Lab. What's the best advice you could give these young scientists as they start their careers?
Change is Chris.
Well, that's a tough one. And I'm sure the secretary has some thoughts about life in general. I would say that, and we sort of get back a little bit to the STEM question. That is, it's my perception, again, working in the laboratory infrastructure across the DOD, getting to know DOE, that we don't necessarily look to a future where people are going to come in and stay a whole career with an organization. That implies a sense of flexibility. And I think that's built into the new generation of people coming up. It's on us, as an organization that hopes to attract talent, to provide efficient and easy ways for people to flow between sectors, whether it's the government, academia, or industry, giving people those opportunities. But that also implies on the, you know, on the student side, on the scientist's side, some flexibility in thinking, a willingness to stay current and train, and not just assume you're coming. I just, you know, the future to me, the future looks nothing like my experience in the past, which was, I'm going to go, I'm going to study, in my case, neuroscience, right? And go and start a lab, and stay there forever until I retire. So my advice is be flexible, think creatively. There's a ton of opportunity, and it's great, great futures, yeah.
That's great advice. Finally, maybe I'll close with one final question. This one is sort of, it's sort of directed right at Secretary Perry. You'll soon mark your first anniversary as Energy Secretary. What do you feel is your greatest accomplishment during your first year? And what goals do you have for the next year?
I think we put a, I think we put a really good team together that respects the historical, the history of the department. But also some very visionary women and men who, well after I'm gone, to be the secretary of energy, will continue to have the passion, have the vision, and have the resolve to take this country forward. I've never been more excited. I realize that, you know, I'm 68 years old, and I'm kind of getting to the end of my adventure from a work standpoint. But I'm really proud of the team that we put together at DOE. I think there's, there's a commitment to the future of this country. There is a renewed commitment to energy resources that I'm really excited to see. That all of the above is not just a throwaway line for us to lead the world. And one of the things that Brian said kind of reminded me of, America is not in the business of just exporting energy there. We're in the business of exporting liberty and freedom. And that's really important. Energy all too often in the past was used as a weapon. And America is now in a position, the geopolitical world has been turned on its head by what's happened in this country for the last few years. And using that energy for good, and using it to export freedom from countries is really important. And being a partner with those countries that are not only just buying our energy, but they're also investing in our future together, because they want to be a partner with the United States. They want to be a partner with National Labs. Because they know that in those National Labs are the finest, most brilliant minds in the world. And I'm proud to be a part of that team. Thank you.
Secretary, I'd like to finally thank you again for taking busy time out of your schedule to come to Jefferson Lab, see the great work that we're doing for the nation. Thanks so much. It's been great having you here.